Good evening and welcome to the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. For the audience who's here in chambers and also on TV, the Planning Commission is made up of seven members. We have four present this evening. Each member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident. Members are appointed by the City Council. The Planning Commission is advisory to the City Council. For most items, the Commission makes recommendations and the City Council has final decision-making authority. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to the appeal of the City Council. For each item, there will be a staff report, then a chance for the applicant to present, then a chance for the member, for any member of the public to provide testimony, and then the Commission will close the public hearing and discuss the item before the action is taken. This evening, we have five study items, so there would be no public testimony this evening. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item this evening is a small business codes and processes update. Planning Supervisor Johnson, you have the staff report.
Thank you Chair Albrecht and Planner Caston Day as well. I will be joining me. I will share my slides here for you. Let me know if you can see that okay. Looks good, okay. So yeah, study item, welcome questions and discussion. So this is an item on the two thousand and twenty four Planning Commission Work Plan. It was actually added by the City Council specifically at their review in January of two thousand and twenty four. So here's just an agenda slide, kind of what we plan to present to you. There's seven subtopics or subprojects, however you want to refer to them as, as part of this broader project. And so we'll kind of go through them all, but plan to just provide a little bit of background, present the topics, get into specific analysis on each of them, and that's probably the bulk of the presentation and discussion. And do, likely we'll discuss and try and get solicit feedback from you as we go through the topics, and then just provide an overview quickly to you about our outreach and engagement activities, and then kind of outline what the next steps are heading out from these study sessions. So as I mentioned, this was specifically added by the Council. Both the Bloomington Forward Two Thousand and Forty Comprehensive Plan and the five-year Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan, both have components and elements that are supportive of the kind of directional goals of this project. I'll highlight the BTT Priority Number Three, Equitable Economic Growth is a key component here, consideration. Similar to the Streamlining Development Ordinance discussions, there's some similar themes in this one is basically just to lower barriers for business formation and operations. Most often the case that comes in the form of just the monetary cost it takes to build out a space or set up a business, but can also relate to just kind of ongoing operational elements as the business is operating as well. One of the considerations though, that I would ask you to keep in the back of your mind, so many of the things we work on or discuss in the zoning code are really there intended to be to maintain or support the public health, safety, and welfare, you always hear that phrase, with respect to the zoning ordinance. And so as you kind of think through some of these perspective changes, I would ask you to keep those considerations in mind as well, just in terms of what the potential impacts are of the change. I should have mentioned at the start, I'm sorry, we have support and support from other professionals here with us this evening. Eric Solley from Environmental Health is here. He's one of the key contributors to a lot of the build-outs for restaurants and other small businesses in Bloomington, so he's very knowledgeable about a number of these things. And Brian Hanson and Julie Long are both here, of course, as always, and can speak to some of the utility topics we're gonna cover. So yeah, the first topic is, or I'm sorry, these are the the project topics, six of them, not seven, I'm sorry, but exterior materials and coatings, parking flexibility, refuse and recycling storage, rooftop equipment screening, and odor control, and grease interceptors. And so one could ask, how did we arrive at these six subtopics or projects? Certainly, the Council provided some direction at their January review when they adopted the work plan, but in addition to that, I would say that these are kind of the most frequent points of feedback we get from the business community when they're applying for development applications or building permits or other things that they're working with on our zoning code. So I would say the list was built just through their direct feedback, informed by their direct feedback as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dakota. He's gonna present the first topic here.
Yeah, so good evening, Commission. So I supported the research on the exterior building material and coatings, and so we consulted some of the neighboring cities and their codes and how they handle exterior materials. We held some discussions with some local architects to understand the local construction, kind of current construction trends, and maybe some of the things that they've run into issues with in previous projects in the city, and then, of course, consulting with different departments here at the city to kind of inform this work. So I'm just gonna touch on the highlights, the first one being exterior coatings. So our current zoning code does not allow painting or coating of primary exterior building materials. This has been in place for a number of years in an attempt to avoid situations where buildings have degraded materials or peeling paint. This provision is often questioned by a lot of business owners who are looking to refresh the look of their building, particularly older buildings that are brick or stucco in the city. So there's kind of, you know, some things to think about, or kind of what the, see one side and what's the trade-off on the other side. And so we kind of have three of them laid out there, you know, painting, brick or masonry can trap moisture and result in disintegration of the brick. It can require regular upkeep of the painted surface, and then it can mask, you know, the brick's natural texture and color. On the flip side, there are now more options in brick paints and stains that support the breathability of brick. The city does have building maintenance standards that can be enforced when a building is in disrepair, whether it's painted or not. And then painting can be a cost-effective way to refresh an older building. So I think kind of with those factors in mind, staff is proposing to allow coating of most exterior building materials, including brick, while ensuring that our building maintenance standards are enforced. The second main area relates to our primary and secondary materials. We currently have an eighty-five percent and fifteen percent ratio for primary and secondary. On the screen there are just some different examples of what we currently kind of consider primary and secondary materials. This ratio does get raised time to time by architects or business owners, and that 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 ratio can limit exterior materials that are more common in current construction trends. And so with that, and to help bring us into more alignment with some neighboring cities, staff was proposing a sixty-five, thirty-five ratio for primary and secondary materials. Related to that, we also wanted to provide more clarity in the code on on things that we've already kind of considered acceptable materials, but maybe aren't explicitly listed in the code, but kind of fall under the catchall of, you know, an equivalent material as approved by the issuing authority. And so just wanting to be more upfront, so architects can read the code and really just understand what is allowed and what is not allowed. One of the things is architectural concrete, kind of concrete panels or cast-in-place concrete has really evolved and can come in a variety of textures and patterns, as you can see here on the screen. You can make it look like it's a brick building, even though it's all concrete, for example. And so just wanting to make sure that we're reflecting all of these different patterns and textures in the code. We do have like one minor exception, that we were excluding the raked or vertical striation finish that's kind of highlighted there. And just to kind of give you that example of what that looks like, staff kind of interpreted that more as an industrial building look, and so we didn't want to necessarily open it up to all commercial and multifamily districts, and so the definition there is kind of making that exception for the raked or vertical striation finish there. And then similar to similar notion, architectural concrete masonry units have come a long way, again, come in a variety of of textures and in shapes, and so just want to account for that in the definition. And then I would say the last major update with the proposed fifteen to thirty-five percent secondary materials, some of our building and inspection staff and fire department had wanted to just ensure that there were some additional fireproofing requirements related to EFS, because in theory it could now be allowed on on more more of the building facade than previously. So you'll see some language in there on that, happy to talk about that after if there's any questions, and then just some minor language changes, just to ensure there's consistency across the different chapters in the code.
Yeah, thank you Dakota. And just as a reminder, we will certainly defer to the Chair and Commission's preference on whether to do questions or provide direction kind of in between each subtopic, or if you want to hold that till the end, we certainly can follow your lead on that.
Preference? I think my preference is to do it as we go, because I think we'll kind of miss some.
Great.
I do have one question. What is the difference between the rib split there on the screen and then the material with the the linear material? They look fairly similar, so what's the difference?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht and Planning Commission, I would say there's not a ton of difference. Some of the the rib split is maybe a little bit wider, kind of in the, I guess, I'm gonna call them columns, even though I know structurally they're not columns on there. I think the reason we didn't make the exception to the concrete masonry units currently was that this is considered a secondary material, and so it'd only be allowed up to thirty-five percent of the facade. But so if there's feedback on that or questions there, that that was kind of the reason for that.
Sure, okay. Questions, comments? Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. I guess, I don't know, maybe I'm thinking about it the wrong way, but it seems to me, I don't, I mean, if, obviously, wanna make things easier for small businesses to get off the ground and get going or grow. To me, I wonder, I mean, I guess I can think of, you know, lands, land smaller landscaping businesses, or or, you know, windows and siding businesses that maybe own their own real estate, but like I, I don't know if, how much changing our material standards are going to, at the end of the day, support small business, because I think investing in commercial real estate in the first place is a expensive thing to do. So they probably already have a running, you should already probably have a running business to some extent that's that's doing fine, or have some sort of investment available to be able to do that. So I don't know, maybe I'm missing something, but that's just.
Commissioner Cookden.
Yeah, Commissioner Curry, I thought the the same thing. I think a lot of small businesses, at least in my head, are going into a strip center or some building that's owned by somebody else. And so, I don't know, it feels like the people developing businesses are not necessarily small businesses. I know I'm generalizing, but I think I agree with you on that.
Along that line, does this include, let's say, tenant improvements as well? So it lets, if it is a small business going into a center and they want to make some sort of, maybe it's, Mike, the thing that I'm thinking of is the Pig Ate My Pizza building, right? It's its own building. I don't know if they actually own that property, but they're going in there. So does that include the tenant improvements and that look to it as well?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht and Planning Commission, that that is correct. So yeah, the exterior material standards that we currently have, and then any proposed changes apply to any new construction, as well as any kind of, I guess, rehab or kind of that retrofit in an existing space.
Sure. So I would agree with Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Cookden that I could see an issue, or not necessarily, the impact on small business maybe not as strong for this one, except for, I do believe that the, if they're doing improvements, which I think a lot of businesses try and do when they go into a space, I think there's impact there as well.
Chair Albrecht, if I may just add to that, Dakota described it well, and I agree with what he said. I think the, one, the aspect of this particular subtopic that we get most frequent feedback would be the painting, because when someone's moving in, they want the building to reflect their brand, excuse me. So certainly that one does have a more direct linkage with small business startups and formations. Most likely, we do see some small additions from time to time, or changing out the exterior materials. That's gonna be happening on a building on Lyndale, not by what I would call a small business, but, oops. But kind of similar along the lines of some of our other projects, when given the opportunity to, you know, evaluate what our zoning code standards are, we we try and seize on that opportunity, as we're gonna talk about the work plan tonight. Once you kind of budget out or frame up a plan for the entire year, entire year's work, some of these things that you've been meaning to look at for several years can get left behind. And so I think one of the, one of the things we were thinking about is just take a broader look at our exterior material standards, because this is an opportunity to do so. And it's been feedback we've been gotten from architects, developers, in addition to small business, most specifically about painting, but sometimes about adding more secondary materials on their storefront, which they're capped at fifteen percent. So that's kind of the thinking there.
Great, thank you. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree that, I think that, you know, marketing the package as a small business incentive probably isn't entirely obvious, but I do think that anytime we can offer more clarity upfront for any business, it's gonna be helpful. I I do think that, and I apologize if this was in the materials and I missed it, I'm recovering from a cold, so I may have 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 missed it, but I'm wondering if there's any kind of language in there, or whether language could be added about reusable reuse reuse items and materials to get back to our sustainability goals for the city, anything that can promote the idea of using things that are more sustainable in nature, I think would be beneficial, particularly when you're talking about building materials.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner White, yeah, thank you for that question. I would say, in our current exterior materials and in in these proposed changes, there's not specific criteria or any language related to sustainable materials. I know the the one thing that related to that in some of our conversation with architects is around, you know, we kind of have natural stone as a primary material, and then we say manufactured stone is a secondary material, and manufactured stone can be a more environmentally friendly material, you're not quarrying, you know, natural stone, but we didn't present that change here as just one example that comes to mind, but, so no specific things in there, but good feedback to kind of think about for sure.
I have one more question. In the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, there is some incentives regarding exterior materials. What what are those incentives?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht and Planning Commission, so currently the incentive is if, you know, they have to at least provide nine percent of their units at sixty percent AMI, and then if they provide more, it's a greater incentive, but it, that current incentive allows any facades that don't face a public street to have what we, what they call in that the OHO Code alternative materials, so it's kind of like fiber cement siding, EFS, some of those things that we kind of call more secondary materials, so kind of as an incentive to have more cost-effective materials on many facades that you're not gonna see from the public street to do that. And so the the change that was kind of presented in the packet was just to make sure if we make any changes to the secondary materials, that those align in that section to just have consistency across those two sections.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you Chair. One more thought on the actual, the benefit, I suppose, you know, if, again, if it's just like a landscaping business, it's just kind of what comes to mind, if someone owns a, or has an opportunity to purchase a small building, for instance, you know, maybe it would make sense to focus on materials, supporting the increase of maybe less expensive materials that improve the look of the building. So if they have, you know, if they have debt on their business, or debt on their real estate or something, they could potentially add value more easily to to the real estate and help, you know, improve their, you know, improve their financial being, I suppose, as a business, so, just a thought.
Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to the coatings. I don't know, Mr. Johnson, what does, would it still require a permit, or what enforcement is there to know that somebody's using an appropriate material to coat their brick?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, I'll actually defer that question to Dakota, he knows this issue better than I do at this point.
Oh, sure. So Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, so in the, currently, there's not a, I guess, permit per se on just painting. If they are making facade improvements, often that is an administrative final site and building plan that would go through staff review, and then, you know, we can add the conditions or, you know, check to make sure they're not proposing to coat something that's not allowed to be coated, and kind of resolve that there before we approve that admin final site and building plan. But then, environmental health has adopted, or the city has adopted, the International Property Maintenance Code standards as well, so we can pull from those to do enforcement on any kind of facade that's in disrepair, related to painting or not, yeah.
Okay, so it's not a permit per se, but if somebody wants to paint their building, they have to come to the city first to get approval of their materials?
No, so that's maybe where I can shed a little bit of light, is more the historic practice, because Glenn could remind us what the date of when the coating restriction was enacted, but there was many commercial and industrial buildings that were painted before the prohibition, and those are allowed to be repainted. And so when they wanna, sometimes we'll get a phone call or a question about it, when they want to proceed with repainting, they can just go ahead and do it, it doesn't require a permit under the state building code. So similarly, of how you're treating those legally non-conforming buildings today, moving forward, if you remove this prohibition, it would just be a, they could just conduct the work. One of the things we've contemplated internally is whether or not to develop like a guide or recommended practices, because, you know, some commercial painters are very familiar with how to paint and treat these types of surfaces, some are less so, and so that's kind of one of our ideas, just from a customer service standpoint, and just for, you know, community aesthetics, that if we get these inquiries in the future, we have some materials to present to them, so that they're aware that there are specific paints for these, for the different types of exterior materials.
So is there a way we could force them to come before the city for approval, or is that not something we could, we could do?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookden, I would say, yeah, there is, there is a way we could have it if we would like it as kind of a zoning permit, probably through an admin final site and building plan, if that is the the direction or preference, I would say is probably the most likely scenario. If you wanted kind of a formal approval, you could certainly do that. It's just not currently proposed in the changes.
So Madam Chair, I think that's how I would get comfortable with this. Otherwise, there's no guarantee that people are gonna use the proper material, and then they're just putting house paint on this thing or whatever, and then we end up with peeling buildings and the undesirable qualities we're trying to avoid. Whereas if we had people, you know, they had to come before the city, that one, way when city staff or whatever are driving around and they see a building being painted, they know whether they've approved the material or not. So I'm not sure I can be comfortable with this change with, without the city having some approval of material.
Any other thoughts from other commissioners on that? I'm I'm just curious as to which, if if we put that that in pro, in place, at what point would that, would it ever be denied? So sort of, don't ask the question if you don't want the answer, sort of situation?
So Chair Albrecht, if I can provide a little bit more food for thought on this one, and I, we've had this same discussion internally, so it's very much tracking with what the best way to process it would be. Ultimately, where we landed as a staff would be not to require an admin, and the reason being is that because it doesn't have a permit associated with it, there's no formal inspection. And so one of the challenges, you can certainly get people on the record as to what type of paint or material they're going to use, but if there's not a formal inspection, and certainly that could be something that you look at and you talk about in terms of just an enforcement standpoint, but without there being the the inspection requirement under the state building code, you know, it would be easy to kind of do the swap out whatever material you submitted in your zoning application. That doesn't mean that we can't approach it that way, and I think this feedback is good to express to the Council for sure, and think about what the best process is moving forward. But it's also just good to be aware of the, what the challenges and realities are as well. Without a permit, you are reliant upon the commercial code enforcement team just being rigorous and regimented about dealing with any kind of maintenance issues, peeling paint or whatnot. That's where the rubber would meet the road. And just from, and Dakota knows this better than you, so I'll ask you as well, but I think most of the communities surveyed that allow some form of coatings did not have a permit process, or, I forget, Dakota?
Oh, sure, yeah, Chair Albrecht and Commission, yeah, just looking at some of the neighboring cities and some comparison cities, I would say it's actually pretty even, they either just explicitly don't allow coating, or they don't really list it in the the code at all and do allow it, and they kind of just treat it on a case-by-case basis of kind of working with the property owner to kind of share those best practices, but they do allow the coating and they don't have a formal permit process for that, and the cities I mentioned didn't have a ton of concerns, or didn't share any major horror stories, but certainly, you know, peeling paint or things like that, then they kind of rely on that commercial code enforcement aspect of it.
Commissioner Cookden.
Yeah, Madam Chair, my last thought is, good paint is expensive, and so I do think there's a risk that if there's a very attractive cheaper option that maybe only lasts ten years instead of forty, we may have building owners taking that option. we may have building owners taking that option.
I tend to agree with that. However, I believe that that's like Mr. Johnson said, I believe that there's a high probability of a switch out at the last minute. They'll say they'll do one thing, but then not. And if we don't have any sort of enforcement on the back end of it, it's sort of enforcement, it's the same enforcement once that starts peeling or becomes an issue. So I would agree with staff on that.
And Chair, not to belabor this this kind of point, but I mean, it can get very granular even beyond that. We require 30 year warranty metals as primary to count as primary exterior materials, for example. It'd be quite easy and it would be hard to chase down all of these types of, I guess, gamesmanship or however you want to describe it. But theoretically, it could be quite easy to have, you know, a certain warranty material on the first building permit that gets signed off and approved by the planning staff and then ultimately later insert some other materials along the lines. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, architects or the development community are doing that as a general practice. I think we've had really good results in terms of the projects that have been built in Bloomington. But you can kind of what I'm saying is you can kind of expand this issue to a whole litany of other things where it's just very hard unless you had an army of community development inspectors at every site to to kind of keep fully on top of. So something to be cognizant of, but it's good feedback.
Any other discussion, questions, comments on exterior coatings? Commissioner Curry.
Sir, thank you, Chair. So just in general, in terms of adjusting the percentages of different types of material on the exterior, is this a question regarding the entire city or specifically businesses which would qualify small as small businesses? Because I think it'd be one thing to approve this or to provide flexibility specifically for small businesses, but another thing to approve it as a citywide update.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Curry, these proposed changes would be citywide. So not necessarily just for small businesses, but for any development or redevelopment in the city. And that's the way our current exterior material code is set up as well.
Commissioner Cooked in.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. The more I think about this one, the less in favor of it I am. I mean, whenever we have seen this as the planning commission, it's always big development. It's huge housing developments. It's a new whatever. I don't ever recall seeing a small business before us that's building new real estate who's asking for a deviation in their exterior building materials. I just don't ever recall that happening. But we do see this every year with new apartment developments and stuff. And so I think the unintended consequences here is that we're really helping out big business and just getting less desirable exteriors on our buildings.
Commissioner Cooked in, would you feel comfortable something in between the eighty five and sixty five percent? Would you would you be comfortable with some level of reduction?
I might go to seventy five, but, you know, I hate throwing numbers around when I don't have expertise on something like what is seventy five, you know, like I try to make data driven decisions in my head. And so it's it's hard for me to say that.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think you just keep it all the same, but potentially in the instance of small business, which maybe owns their own 10,000 square foot industrial building or maybe an office building that's of the same size, maybe they have some flexibility if they want to do an addition or redo the exterior to improve the value of the the property. That would be the only instance that I don't know how you even manage that, but that would be the only instance that would make sense in my mind.
Yeah, I think it would be hard to qualify which is a technical small business based on what their income is or what their revenue is and what that looks like. I think it would be. Commissioner Cooked in.
I'm just we're probably speaking too much here, but is there something about owner occupied that would
Sure.
satisfy you?
Sure. I mean, there are groups, obviously, that can own and occupy health partners, for instance, owns their own office building, but maybe under a certain size, under 10 or 20,000 square feet, and they own and occupy it, maybe qualifications like that.
Yeah, Chair, if I can add a little bit of commentary to that, and this might relate to other issues that we discussed this evening. But and Glenn might know some of this. You've done some work with the Port Authority and other community development strategic efforts around trying to define what small businesses are and kind of develop policies specifically geared towards those. One of the you can look at number of employees, you can look at some other things, tax status. But one of the challenges of that is when you have franchise type operations and those technically meet employee thresholds because they're independent operators. And so it gets a little sticky is what I'm getting at. And and I don't know, I don't have the right answer to that right off the spot. Building size could be something to to look at certainly. If I'm just kind of providing a broader summary of why we looked at this, one was just the opportunity. Two was that we do see some requests for exterior material changes on storefronts, multi tenant sometimes, related to branding. And the third was, I think, just anecdotally from feedback we've been getting is that we were a little out of step with some of our peers, which I think Dakota's research probably agreed with or aligned with in terms of what our ratio is. Every city is going to have little nuances as to what counts as a primary versus a secondary material. And ours is even, I think, less complex than some cities have class one, two, three, four, five materials. And it gets very complicated quickly. So I'm glad that's not where Bloomington's at. It just makes it difficult for architects and staff. But just providing a little more summary as to why we included it in the project.
Before, sorry, Commissioner Cooked in, I just want to make one comment on this. And I I know we've seen a couple of applications come through and say it, you know, they're pushing out deadlines because construction is too expensive and things like that. And I'm I'm guessing secondary, I'm assuming that secondary materials are significantly cheaper than primary materials generally. And so for me, I am in favor of the staff proposal here in that I think we're moving into a challenging environment for construction. And if we can throw a little bit here and there, I think it's it's a positive thing. Commissioner Cooked in.
Thanks, ma'am, Chair. What worries me a little bit, especially as we look at some of these secondary materials like EIFS and fiber cement siding and stuff, I know a lot of our neighboring cities are using those, but like, I'm not sure I want our city to look like those, these sort of dorky suburbs with these giant strip malls full of fiber cement panels. Like, I don't want Bloomington to look like that. Like, oof, maybe I work with too many architects, but it just kind of grosses me out. Like, I I don't know. To me, the lion's share of the benefit with this one goes to big development. And yes, there would be some benefit to small benefit, but I think big developers are who's who's winning with this one.
All right.
Thank you. I think it's good feedback. I kind of sensed and I don't want to reletigate it, but I sense a little bit of maybe a split there. And that's okay. That's important feedback for the council to consider. So we'll keep moving. This is a sub project two, parking flexibility. So as maybe longer tenured members on the board may know, but often sometimes we get requests for flexibility to our off street parking requirements. So our parking requirements are determined on a by use basis, typically by by a square footage ratio or sometimes by dwelling unit or amount of seats in a restaurant. There's lots of different little specific characteristics that drive the parking requirement in our parking ordinance. But one of the other projects on the 2024 work plan actually was asking to look at this specific question because we wanted to see what other forms of flexibility were out there by right to kind of help make it a little bit easier. Because anecdotally, one of the things we experience with new businesses trying to move to Bloomington is sometimes they'll be looking at a particular site. It happens to be a more constrained site with a lower parking count. And if they want to change it from use X to use Y, use Y requires more parking than use X, they effectively can't move in. And sometimes we've had periods where there's some buildings remain vacant for an extensive period of time on the basis of not being able to find that one like for like or use for use swap. So that's kind of what was the motivating factor on on this one to a degree. So we are recommending some changes to our parking flexibility requirements. Before I get to the new flexibility about building reuse proposed, just some notes about some of the other ones. So we offer proof of parking, shared parking, linkage to mass transit, on street parking, and there's the plan development flexibility as well. But we are recommending some changes within those existing flexibility measures just to clarify who the approval authority should be on those. Most of them are just clarifications. In the case, some of them align with the changes that were made in streamlining. So in some cases, the planning commission gained approval authority of some application types that they didn't previously have. And so if they were seeking this flexibility of parking, you would want the application to stop at the at the body that has the authority to approve it typically. So it was adding the planning commission in in that case. And so just a point about that and then about it aligning with streamline. The piece about the new flexibility that we're recommending has to do with building reuse. So similar to Commissioners White's point about trying to encourage kind of sustainability and keeping buildings full. I mentioned kind of the situation on the slide here is an example of that where you have a small office building just under 5,000 square feet. It only has 13 parking stalls. So it's actually technically legally nonconforming for our office parking requirement currently. But oftentimes, we'll get businesses looking at a type of building for potential build out and reuse situation. And if they can't make the parking requirement, there's really no path forward for that building to be filled by any use other than office, for example, or a lower density use. So what this new potential flexibility would offer is for just for commercial or industrial buildings, 10,000 square feet or less. It's really important that you limit this type of flexibility to smaller buildings because the larger the buildings get, then the more parking we're talking about effectively. So limiting it to a certain size is one way to kind of curb the scale of what the potential flexibility is. Another piece of it is that the site has to be determined as we've drafted it, has to be constrained in some way. So if there's an ability to add some additional parking stalls on site, which isn't often the case necessarily, but is sometimes the case, then that's would be kind of an eligibility test of whether this can be supported. There would have to be a determination that it is a constrained site. And then related to that, also, no, no per proposal for safe traffic safety concerns or no propensity for traffic safety concerns. If you had a very constrained parking lot and you had people coming and going for a more intense use, there could be situations where people are backing out and back into the street because they can't turn around in the property. So that was another thing that we wanted to assure is that there's adequate vehicle access and circulation being provided. So the level of what we're talking about is up to a 25% reduction that can seem high in comparison to some of our some of our other flexibility measures. But when you pair that with buildings of 10,000 square feet or less, we're really not talking about that many parking stalls. So you could lead you to ask, so what is really the big impact here? But anecdotally, we've had several businesses not be able to go forward because they were four, three, five parking spaces short. So it can seem like not a lot, but it's right on the margin of where things can go forward or not. So yeah, that's that's kind of the basics of some of these changes. I can, we also proposed a modest change to our transit parking flexibility, just further clarifying or defining what we consider proximity to mass transit to actually be because right now it's not defined. But those, yeah, I'll pause here for questions and feedback and we can go from there.
I have a question about the terminology of constrained sites. So is the picture that you have on your slide, would that be considered a constrained site even though there you could take up some green space probably and create parking, but I don't think we necessarily want to be doing that either.
Fair. Yeah. So Commissioner Albrecht, so our code does require minimum landscape yards, for example, in areas to have trees and shrubs and plant material. So that's something we certainly would look at as well. But just on the basis of, I would consider this a constrained site. That's an exercise that we would want to involve the city engineer in as well as other people reviewing the application just to make sure we get multiple eyes on it. But the reason it's constrained is because typically there's not a lot of these sites are served by an arterial roadway. So there's in many cases likely not another opportunity to add an additional driveway on the site, a curb cut. And in addition to that, you know, just our our drive aisles have minimum widths in addition to the actual parking stalls themselves. So while it can look like there's some green space areas available on the site, when you factor in the landscape yards, the other setbacks, and then the required dimensions of the drive aisles, it actually eats it up really quickly and would not be a code compliant way to add parking. So we would be utilizing what our code requirements are as opposed to kind of shrinking that up just to squeeze it in there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't know. What are we talking about? Like, one or two stalls that people have been short or is it like 10 stalls or?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Curry. So it's it's been different. It's been arranged in different situations. But it has been as low as a few. And so it's it's a scenario where something along these lines, this type of flexibility could have made a difference. Yes or no? There's always the, you know, the variance or the PD flexibility route too. But as similar with our discussions with streamlining, if you're talking about months and months of process, someone's just going to tell their commercial broker to keep looking. Like, let's it's not working out here. It's not going to meet the zoning code. Let's just find a different site. And so depending on the property, as we've, as I shared before, we have had a few that have had prolonged vacancy and storefronts sit empty. It's just not a good situation for that for an area.
Yeah. And I mean, I think it makes sense from the standpoint of if there's one or two of these in Bloomington on the market at a time, and it doesn't work in Bloomington, then they go to Eden Prairie or, I don't know, Shakopee or something like that. So I think it makes sense to have that flexibility, maybe up to a certain number of stalls, but so that parking on street parking doesn't go crazy, but.
Commissioner Cooked in.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. I'm also in favor of this. We are way over parked in the city of Bloomington. When I I've lived here most of my entire adult life, and I think about the times I haven't been able to find a parking spot is like, you can count it on one hand. It's really like when Trader Joe is in Total Wine Share at a parking lot. Once we stopped doing that, it's there's like, I can't think of anywhere in Bloomington where you can't find a parking spot. So anything we can do to be more flexible here, I'm all for. I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner White.
Yeah, I agree. I think this seems reasonable. I also think you had mentioned sort of tying it to access to and proximity to public transportation. I think anytime we can emphasize that, it's also a good thing, reminding people that they don't need to drive and park. They can hop on the bus or the train to get to where they're going. It's also a great reminder for that as well.
I agree with that.
Great. Thank you. I'll move on to the next one. Thank you for the feedback. The work plan doesn't include a recommendation on a project studying our parking requirements. So maybe more to come on that. So yeah, refuse and recycling. So this is one of the topics that some of Mr. Soli in the back rooms expertise might come in handy. He's worked on a number of build outs and seen some different scenarios. But just to reiterate kind of why we have the standards we have, what our standards are, and maybe what sets Bloomington apart from some other communities, generally speaking. So our existing standards, and there are some, there are some exceptions. In fact, you actually processed a city code amendment that expanded what some of those exceptions are, if you recall, at Nine Mile Brewing, related to a food use in an industrial site. But prior to that, there was some exceptions built in for industrial sites if they weren't in close proximity to residential uses, for example. So I don't want to say that this is required in every single situation, but for most of our commercial and multifamily residential sites and even some industrial sites, what we're looking at is refuse and recycling storage that are typically attached to the principal building. They're typically fully enclosed, a part of the building. There's internal accessibility, meaning it's just part of the building and there's a door for the employees to gain access to the trash room. There's a there's a picture of it, obviously, here at a restaurant example. And to note that food uses typically do require special finishes that relate to having cleanable surfaces effectively. That's really the important part is with food waste is having those cleanable surfaces. So that typically means a water source, a floor drain, certain types of tile or finishes that are washable. that are washable, in effect. So I would say that in new construction, something I'd just ask you to think about as we talk about this, in new construction situations, it's fairly more straightforward to accommodate these types of facilities. When retrofitting some of our older shopping centers, multi-tenant buildings, or going in an existing building, it becomes more challenging and costly to meet this standard. So, but why do we regulate it the way we do? So there's many issues that Bloomington dealt with prior to the adoption of these rules. And those issues dealt with illegal dumping, employee safety, so physically taking out the garbage late at night in kind of, you know, less than adequately lit areas, there were some safety issues that happened. Unsanitary conditions, vandalism, odors, rodents, flies, insects, leechades. That's when, you know, garbage or other materials in the trash facility drain towards the storm sewer. So wanting to keep those out of, you know, natural waters via the storm sewer, and just general site aesthetics. So if they're not enclosed, not properly screened, you have just kind of dumpsters sitting out and about, obviously that can have, be a poor aesthetic condition as it relates to community welfare. So that's kind of the issues, that's the challenges that these standards that we have in place attempted to fix, and I'd say largely it did fix many of them. The flip side, or the downstroke, is that it's very costly. It's very costly to create these facilities, particularly for small businesses, but I would say most importantly for retrofitting. So as you were talking about exterior materials, you're typically going in an existing building. Larger companies might be building new construction or building something on their own. It's easier to create that facility in a new building than it is in an existing building. So yeah, that's kind of what brought us here, piece of it. So Eric and I, in Environmental Health, we went on a tour in October where we saw lots of different facilities in Bloomington and a neighboring city as well, just to get some additional context with it. So here's a couple examples. The picture on the left is a completely code-compliant trash room attached to a restaurant. The picture on the right is a multi-tenant center that has interior garbage storage in the building. However, it does not have internal access to all of the tenants. Because if you think about a multi-tenant shopping center, you would in effect have to create a dedicated rear access or hallway to the shared trash facilities, or build a trash room in every single tenant space, which also may or may not be practical. So that's an example of that on the right there. On the left slide, so this is an example of an exterior. It's not technically attached. Well, I suppose the screen wall is attached, but it's an open-air trash storage. Again, effective screening, it matches the building, it looks pretty good, it contains the trash and recycling in an effective way. It's also close to the back door of the business, I would point out, so there's a short distance for employees to utilize the facility. And the other thing I'd mention too about when allowing detached trash facilities is that sometimes a business will want to put it further away from their actual use, and that sounds great, because their customers are maybe using an outdoor patio, or who knows what. The problem with that is that every property has neighbors. And so where you're putting the trash, you might be moving it further away from you, but you're in effect moving it closer to your neighbors. So similar picture, or similar situation on the right here, again, this is a legally non-conforming facility in Bloomington, it's close to the back door, it has screening. Neither of these facilities have roofs, have roofs, so I'll talk about that in a minute. But yeah, these are examples of legally non-conforming facilities that are outside, but in staff's view are pretty effective at managing the issue. Here's a couple situations that is kind of more emblematic of some of the problems or challenges that we see in both of these. Well, the one on the left, it's a legally non-conforming site, but it involved a retrofit of an existing space. And so it has a trash room, but one of the challenges is, is that they still have to push their facilities out for pickup, right? But what, sometimes what we see is that a business will just keep it outside then at that point. And then another pressure that we see is that sometimes square footage or space is such an important commodity or resource, that they'll convert that space to other uses, typically product storage or other things. And so that's one of the challenges as well. The picture on the right, you can kind of see the different pattern or coloration on the pavement. And so what that is, is actually different things draining to the storm sewer in the back of a multi-tenant center. So that's kind of really what you want to avoid, is whenever thinking about exterior storage of trash and recycling, is where is the storm sewer? And ensure that you're not placing it in such an area or location that it's going to be draining right towards that facility, because that's, that's not allowed, and that's a problem. So because the changes to the, you know, or because I should say the potential changes to these standards are more substantial than some of the other topics we're going to talk about tonight, there's not, there's not, if the city wants to take refuse and recycling in a new direction, as it pertains to kind of what our standards are, it's more likely leaning towards a full rewrite than some strategic edits here or there, if that makes sense. And so instead of providing you an exhibit similar to the other standards where we give you redline or actual code changes that we would put before you to consider, just want to ask you a couple guiding questions. We'll ask these same questions of the council to get their feedback, but want to present these to you to hopefully guide our future work as we, as we prepare an ordinance. So the first question is just, should new construction, restaurants, or all multifamily, commercial, industrial specifically, meet the existing standards? So that's the first question, is kind of a differentiation between new construction versus retrofitting. So I'd pose that to the body for your feedback.
My first instinct is to say, yes, they should meet existing standards if it's new construction, because there is a point at which makes it easier to do that work. I think some of the options that you showed for exterior facilities were made of wood, which I know can deteriorate over time. You have to think about snow, you have to think about water intrusion and things like that, whereas in a, in a, building it as a new construction as part of the building seems a lot more, it seems long-lasting, I would say. Thoughts? Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. I would say that you just let, you just, I guess, at least on a use case basis, it maybe depends on the use. So like restaurants, which have, you know, every square foot is like really important versus industrial, there might be a difference in allowing one versus, allowing outdoor refuse for one use versus the other. But like thinking back to your example of where it didn't work, I mean, so they, if they had outdoor, an outdoor contained space, it would just stay in the contained space. It wouldn't be like lying all over the back parking lot, right? So in general, I think if you had that, it would somewhat mitigate that issue that you were worried about, and would just be, you know, help reduce the cost of new development in general, so.
Commissioner White.
I think it's really tempting to say, well, let's make it conditional if the, if it's a, if it's a business that makes really messy garbage, maybe they have one kind of garbage room, and if it's just paper, we have a different kind of recycling room. But the problem with buildings is what they're built for isn't always what they're continuously used for. So I think you, you know, we have to write our guidelines and codes for buildings to be used for multiple use over the course of their life. And so I think you have to think about what's in the best interest of the health and safety of the people who use the building, the health and safety of the people who live and work around the building, and the neighbors, and, and as you mentioned, you know, the conditions of, you know, the conditions that might lead to runoff or leaching from the garbage that's, being dealt with in the business, ending up, you know, blowing around the neighborhood or leaching into the, to the groundwater or into the, to the sewer system. So I guess I'm inclined to, I like our tougher standards. I know that it adds to the cost of the build when you're talking about new construction. I know that it adds a level of expense to business, but I think in the long run, it saves a level of expense of having to clean up a mess, or to deal with the long-term impacts of improperly handled garbage, or the health impacts of exposure of employees or neighbors to, to the garbage. So, you know, I guess I'm open to hearing examples that might persuade me to tweaks here or there, but in general, I tend to like the, I think, more appropriate way we deal with garbage currently.
Commissioner Cooked in.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. One of the things I'm thinking about is organics, and so a lot of places are moving towards organics disposal now, and I work at a facility where we do that, and it smells awful. And so I would rather have that inside and not bothering the public with it. And I think organics is going to be even more attractive to rodents, take your, take your pick of people, not people, but things that want to eat decomposing food, right? So I'm in favor of keeping things as they are. I recognize that as an expense, but in this case, I'm in favor of our current standards.
Chair Albrecht, and just one clarification, and I think I've got your feedback recorded on this, but I probably should have framed in the, with the question that if you were going away from the existing standard, and me being specific about what this, by that I mean attached, internally accessible, and special finishes for food uses. But my, my question could have been framed better by assuming that if not that, then you've, you're developing other standards in effect that mitigate some of the nuisance characteristics. In other words, don't assume that it becomes the third slide that I showed with the worst-case scenarios. Assume that it's subject to some standards, but is allowed detached and outside. So just that one clarification. I probably should have mentioned that. But I think, I don't think that changes the feedback in, anyway, but I just want to make Okay, thank you. So the second question then is, and my first question focused on new construction, I guess just quick poll of hands, or is the same guidance for retrofitting existing buildings? And frankly, that's where we're seeing most of the difficulty to comply with the city's
Commissioner Cooked in.
Thanks, ma'am, Chair. Mr. Johnson, what constitutes a retrofit?
Yeah, so.
Or turning into a vacuum repair store, is that a retrofit, or?
Yeah, thank you. So basically, we have to look at what our conformance triggers are. So if you're a retail use going to a retail use, then that would not be a trigger to meet our standards. And that's why frankly, even on some buildings, you see someone having to build a new trash room, there's other tenants that have the right or ability to use the exterior, the non-conforming, legally non-conforming trash. And that can be a point of frustration for business owners as well. But typically what it is, is it's a restaurant moving into a multi-tenant space that previously was not a restaurant. It was some other, some other form of use, usually a retail use or something along those lines, or it's been vacant for such a period of time that it's lost its non-conformity. But, you know, Eric has gone through this many times, and he gets beat up about it, and that's his job, that's okay, but that's, that's the reality. So it's the retrofitting, by that I mean it's a new use that hits the, hits the trigger. And the trigger is usually food.
Commissioner Cooked.
Thanks, ma'am, Chair. I feel the same here. I mean, if I'm putting a restaurant somewhere, I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation that I have to spend some money to handle my trash. So I don't know if I'm answering one of the specific questions here. What are the questions you're looking to answer?
I think you, I think you are. I think you're saying stick to the, stick to the existing standards in both scenarios.
Yes.
Is what I'm hearing.
I think for new construction, sticking to the existing standards, I would be a little more flexible on retrofitting, particularly thinking about the demand for, what we hear is like, we want more restaurants in our community. Well, if this is hindering their participation because they can't go into a lot of spaces, restaurants do not make a lot of money and are a huge risk upfront. So I don't think that they're coming into facilities with a lot of extra income to do this. So I would be in favor of detached, but attached, like you said before, where it would be, you know, it would be detached in that they wouldn't share wall, you wouldn't be able to enter it from the inside of the building, but it would be close enough to the building that it would be less of a nuisance to neighbors. And I think it needs to be heavily screened, enclosed on all sides. I don't know about a roof, probably. I think you run into some maintenance concerns there with, they're building sort of a flat roof that they just spilled out of wood or something. I don't think it, that is, has a long, lot of longevity, but, yeah, I think, I think generally, it would be great if it was directly attached to the building, but not necessarily have internal access. Similar to the image that you showed of, I believe the Devani's on, wherever it was. That seems.
I don't know where you're speaking.
That seems pretty, it doesn't seem like a nuisance to me.
For the record, I highlighted that as a good, a good situation.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I just think, I would, I guess I'm optimistic. I think the city staff, I'm sure, can figure out how to solve for whatever potential challenges putting this stuff outside could create. So keeping it up against the building should create a kind of a loop of accountability as well with the business if they're the ones that have to smell it. So I think I'm optimistic that can figure out a solution that works for everyone.
Commissioner Cooked in.
Just sort of spitballing here, but would there be consideration of design standards for these? So you're not getting a slatted wood fence that isn't really doing anything? It has to be more robust than that?
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Cooked in. So yeah, we certainly can specify, what I see a lot of cities have is they say, either using approved primary or secondary materials that match the building, or something along those lines. And there's a, there's kind of a wide range of language that I've seen, and some of them are more lenient, and some of them are more rigid. So it can go as rigid as it needs to be.
You might be able to convince me to do something like that with proper design standards. It's not my favorite, but I could get there.
In the case of the example you used earlier of the pizza location, that would not be primary or secondary materials, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that would be not conforming to a design standard if we were to put that in there.
That's Chair Albrecht, that's true.
Then I would lean towards not a design standard, but sort of a guidance on conformity with the existing building of some level. Other thoughts? Commissioner Cooked in.
Could be tricky for a glass building.
That's true.
If you have to meet the existing building, so I don't know.
I don't know a lot of, I don't know a lot of glass buildings that are being retrofitted, however.
They probably have enclosed trash.
Commissioner.
I mean, again, I think that you have to write it for all kinds of businesses, even though we're largely talking about restaurants. And so I think, you know, you write, I trust the staff to write the thing that is enforceable and that makes sense. I think what we want to avoid is a, you know, shoddy wood and lean to tack to the back of the building to, you know, barely screen the garbage cans with a lot of, attracting a lot of rodents and giving off a harsh scent to the neighbor next door. So I think that we all universally agree on. I think I'm definitely understand that retrofitting is a much different situation than a new build. You, it's You, it's absolutely needs to be a different conversation. And I think I'm also open to a different set of standards for that than for a new build.
Okay, thank you Chair Albrecht. And I appreciate the feedback. If it's okay, I'm going to try and run through the remaining, even though establishing that important kind of bigger guidance, just run through the rest of these. Just to the point on a roof. The reason a roof is that it keeps the storm, it minimizes the amount of stormwater entering into the refuse space, which is it helps deal with that leachate or leakage issue towards the storm sewer. In effect, the stormwater is coming in less, the snow and rain is coming in less contact with those potential hazardous or not good materials. So that's the reasoning behind that.
So if, if there is a roof, and I, that totally makes sense to me, then I think there needs to be some sort of guidance on that it can't just be kind of, you're putting wood slats on top for it to rot and snow to sit on top of.
Yep. I think there's durable metal products that are fairly affordable and could serve that purpose.
Excellent.
Okay, there. Does that kind of broad support on that? Okay, thank you for the head nods. I think this has been discussed already and I felt or I interpreted that there is support behind this, but just a requirement that the facility be within a certain distance of the facility for employee safety? Yes, okay. We can keep going here. Should the facility be limited to side and rear yards, can't be closer to the street than the principal building? So that's going to help with the aesthetics and screening issues. Okay, head nods on that one. Buffer setback to adjacent residential structures in some cities I see can't be closer than, say 50, 50-foot setback to a residential, nearby residential site or even greater. We can zoom in on what we think is correct, but just broad support of that as well. Okay, thank you. And then sight lighting. So one of the issues, again, back to the employee safety piece, just has to do with if, from staff's view, we would recommend that if you were constructing ex, new exterior trash facilities, that that would be a trigger to upgrade lighting to ensure employee safety.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you all. So the next topic is rooftop equipment screening. This one's very quick and I think pretty straightforward. This is really just seeking clarifications. Just in the past, we've had a few instances where the code was a little bit unclear just from an interpretation standpoint on when screening would be required or not. Again, you can say that the connection point to small business might, might be less or so. But in reality, sometimes people have to new, new mechanical equipment on their rooftop. And so being clear about when it is or is not required, just in terms of when it adds value, we would recommend adding ground level to the trigger. We do have some areas of Bloomington where people are in taller buildings and they can see rooftop mechanical. It's really hard to solve for that and we don't think that that's kind of what the broad purpose of this requirement should be. So we would recommend having ground level observation of the equipment as being the trigger. We also recommend one other tweak to this standard, and that's an exception for exhaust pipes. There's not many uses in Bloomington that have a lot of exhaust pipes coming out of facilities, but we do have some high-tech manufacturing and other things where we've had staff. I'll look at a plan and say, well, does this need to be screened? And it's, you know, 10 feet tall and a tube, and that's a very hard thing to screen and it's not very practical and not easy structurally to screen something like that. So just think it's trying to kind of resolve an internal staff interpretation issue there where we think it just doesn't make sense. Does that seem like a broad, any questions about this one?
Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, thanks ma'am chair. Mr. Johnson, I do have a question. I should have prepped you for it. You may not have an answer, but with the way the code is written today, if, do you only have to screen the portion of the equipment that can be seen from ground level? Or is it the entire piece of equipment if it can be seen?
So would you mind rephrasing that again to make sure I captured that?
On the ground and I can see half of the piece of equipment, does only that half need to be screened? Or does the whole piece need to?
That would be correct. Whatever's visible. And oftentimes what they submit to us is actually like a line of sight analysis that an architect can prepare. Because often what happens is the roof line or the parapet of the building will block the lower portion of the unit. So unfortunately for them, it's kind of the upper part that, I mean, yes, you could go without screening the lower part theoretically if the, assuming the equipment is setback from the roof line a little bit or the roof's edge. But yes, they need to screen if it's visible from the ground. And the way our stand, I don't have the language on this slide, but the, it's visible from adjacent streets and sidewalks. So it's not just private property. You have to be on a adjacent, it's public or private, but streets and sidewalks. So yes, you would just need to screen the visible portion.
Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, thanks ma'am chair. I, I happen to live next to a building that has only screened the top part of their equipment and it looks so bad. And again, I'm like just harping on aesthetics now. I would be open to changing that part of our code to require the full piece of equipment being screened. It looks so weird. It's just this floating eyebrow. It's just floating in the air. But aside from that, can you remind me what you're asking feedback on?
Just that kind of confirming, adding this clarification for the ground level piece. And then also the creating the exception for exhaust pipes. But if you wanted to connect with me offline about the situation that you're referring to, I'd be happy to look at it.
I would like to, and I am in favor of what you've proposed here. Screening every piece of equipment for those who are in taller buildings is impractical. And for the exhaust pipes, I think that's also a practical solution here or exception. So I'm okay with what's proposed here.
Commissioner White.
Thank you so much chair. I just want to make sure that we have a clear definition of exhaust pipes before we do that exception to make sure that it's not, doesn't create an inadvertent loophole for things we don't want to create a loophole for. So other than that, I support what's been proposed.
Good point. I'm also in support of the recommendation.
Okay, thank you for the feedback there. We will look at that. So odor control. And again, this is a standard that applies most often to restaurant uses. But we do have a few other food-related processing facilities. We've had a coffee roaster in the past. We've had some others. But so our city code, we previously associated with conditional use permits. We didn't have it in the code, but we would attach it as a condition of approval historically. And then we adopted into the code, I believe into 2019, to just have more formal rules around it, kind of memorializing what the past practice was in effect. But right now, if you're a food use within 250 feet of a residential dwelling and you have either a type one or a type two hood, then you have to have odor control. And the current standard requires an engineer to certify the system. That in effect is basically the form of approval. So an engineer has to stamp it and design it and they have to provide a letter that this is an adequate system for whatever the, the cooking or the food program is. We did do the peer city research as we typically do. Most cities do not have odor control standards for food. Most cities don't regulate odor. The MPCA, so the State Pollution, Pollution Control Agency does regulate odor, but not for food uses. They do it for industrial and other odors or emissions that are more clearly tied or the science is more clearly backed that there is a public health impact to some of these things. So that's what the MPCA is focused on. They're not, they don't do food. And so of the cities that do have some odor mitigation requirements for restaurants, what we found is Richfield, Woodbury, Bloomington. So we're in the smaller group, not the larger group in this respect. And again, this is something that can, depending on the type of equipment they have to get, can carry substantial cost with it. In some buildings, you know, most can probably adequately handle the structural load of something like this, of these. I mean, you don't always need the larger rooftop unit. Sometimes there's other methods. But that, that can be an issue as well. So just thinking through it with the, the cost component. The other piece too is just that some small businesses don't know an engineer or how to, that has proved to be a difficult hurdle for some folks. And then related to that, some feedback that we've gotten is that engineers tend to live in very black and white world. The problem is, is that you can't mitigate odor down to nothing. That is, that is not backed by science or possible. You can diminish the impacts of odor, you can't eliminate it. And so one of the challenges that, or the feedbacks that we've gotten is that even when engaging with some mechanical engineers, they were, there was some discomfort in certifying, putting their PE on the letter or on the line, so to speak, of saying that this is going to suppress, completely suppress whatever odor is being generated from a use. So that's one of the issues that we've, or feedbacks we've gotten as well. So with that kind of feedback in mind, what staff would recommend to do, there's really two options here. The staff recommendation is to change our existing standards, reducing the, the distance requirement where it's triggered from 250 to 150 feet. That would bring us into alignment with Richfield. That's what their standard is. And the intent of that is really just mitigating odors for budding properties. So what's happening right now with the 250-foot measurement is that you're having scenarios where residential's across a public street and it still gets triggered. And the further a facility is away from residential, at that point now odor is mixing with other environmental things, the further away you get. So that's one of the things. We also, I didn't have this on the slide, but just a slight clarification about where the measurement is taken from, the actual exhaust, where the odor is being exhausted. One of the recommendations is to remove type two hoods from the list. So that tends to be steam-related emissions and Eric can speak more intelligently about this than I can if there's questions about it. Thirdly, remove the engineer certification, and this relates to the fourth bullet. So typically who we're working with are mechanical contractors, you know, the captive airs of the world, the other companies that provide these kinds of equipment. And, you know, they have reputable designers. They just don't happen to be engineers typically. And I would say that the building staff has gained more awareness and knowledge of some of these systems as well and can look into it. So in effect, what the third and fourth bullet really realistically is doing is it's swapping an engineer certification for the building official approval in effect. And I think that that's important because what we just, what the building official approval is doing effectively is ensuring that someone is not just selecting the most cost-efficient system, no matter the situation. Because some cooking, some facilities are quite intense and lots of frying or other cooking practices that do emit a lot of odors. And so while the building official is not an expert in every single odor suppression system, they do know a good one from a bad one and what's, you know, commonly accepted practice. So that's kind of the theory there. Option B would be a more aggressive intervention to just eliminate odor control from the city's regulatory framework and no longer regulate food odors. So those are kind of the two options there for your consideration. Happy to take questions.
Curious as to, how often do we get odor complaints?
That's a question I would, if he's willing, I would ask Eric to answer that question. Environmental Health also does zoning code enforcement and compliance. So they would more likely to receive that inquiry than planning would be.
Correct. Since this new implementation of the odor control system that's currently there, we've had very minimal complaints. Prior, we had quite a few. I can't give you a specific number, but it was quite a large number prior to the implementation of this, of the system. It does impact the residents around there, so something to consider.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am chair. Mr. Johnson, just clarifying, is this exclusive to food? Or what about things like pet daycare or other things?
Nope. These standards do not, do not apply to, it's a food processing, I believe is what the specific code standard says. I can look it up, but it's specific to food. But it doesn't, you know, there's other things other than restaurants that get in that category. I mentioned the coffee roaster was one scenario.
It's a type two.
Okay, is it? Okay.
Since you're up here, Mr. Sully, will you, I don't know anything about type one versus type two hoods. Will you illuminate that for us a little bit?
Sure, sure. Two different styles of hood. Type one is usually used for grease laden vapors, like deep fried oils, hamburgers, things like that. A type two hood is a steam hood, usually for dishwashers or baking products, like a, a large baking oven or a coffee producer, like a coffee roaster kind of scenario, that's a type two. And it specifically has to do with the accumulation of grease laden vapors within the shaft of the duct, of the ductwork. And usually the type one devices are used for more of an odoriferous type of emission from the, from the restaurant itself. Type two is more just a steam and heat kind of a scenario.
With that additional information, I am in favor of removing the type two hood, removing the engineer certification and designating the building official. I am not as much in favor about the, reducing the distance. Seems like we've had good, good, what should I say, compliance with what we are doing right now with 250 feet. And I would be hesitant to make that significantly smaller.
Commissioner White.
I, I agree with, I support the proposals. I actually am open to the 150 feet, maybe, I don't know if it's the exact right number. I, I see your point about, you know, somebody who's across a, you know, somebody across American Boulevard really going to smell what's cooking on the other side of American Boulevard. But somebody who's living in a mixed-use building is definitely going to smell something cooking on the first floor. And that's, I think, really more what we're trying to get at the heart of with something like, something like this. So I'm not sure what the right number is, but I could see where 250 could, could be maybe a little too high to be, to be worrying about. So I'm open to negotiation on that, but I, I'm fine with removing type two and, and the rest. But I definitely would not want to remove the entire odor control requirement.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am chair. I too am okay with removing the, the second, third and fourth bullet points. With 150 feet thing, I was kind of thinking about how many of us live within 150 feet of a busy street? And I do, or at least awfully close to 150 feet. And I don't ever feel like I'm just breathing in exhaust and things when I'm outside or smelling it. And so if, if cars driving by with, you know, exhaust coming out of them all day is, is not enough to bother me, I think I, I could be in favor of 150 feet for restaurants.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks chair. Yeah, I support the staff recommendation.
Great. Thank you all. Okay to move on ahead? Thank you Eric. So this is the last subtopic here, grease interception. We have Brian Hanson and Julie Long here in the engineering department. They can speak to some of the utility aspects of this. But this frankly is the issue that we identified and we were getting specific feedback from businesses and from council on this one. So we had to report back out on it. But it's the matter that we have the least amount of discretion about. And the reason being is that, and what the, sorry, let me back up. What this issue is basically is preventing fats, oils, greases from being deposited or sent into the wastewater system, into the san, into the wastes, yeah, sanitary sewer. And so the Metropolitan Council, who provide the regional treatment of wastewater as well as federal regulations related to EPA, both have standards that have to be met in terms of sending fats, oils and other similar materials into the, the sewer system. So yeah, just to reiterate, we have very limited discretion here. Now that being said, when commercial kitchens get built out, they typically need to install some form of, form of grease interceptors. The city's typical or base standard has always been, or not always, has recently been, install an external grease interceptor of a thousand gallon tank. Now, the reason for that size, it's really just as a starting point to get the conversation started. But the reason for that size is another issue is that the smaller you go, and we'll talk about improved technology here in a minute, but the smaller you go, these have to be emptied over time. So the smaller the intervention, the more maintenance it calls upon. And so the city has experienced at a number of different sites where unfortunately they've had to do maintenance or prevention activities at the cost to the public of issues arising in the sewer system. Brian and Julie can speak to it better than I can. But effectively what we're recommending here is that the utility superintendent has the authority to approve alternative systems to this thousand gallon. The problem is cost and the physical space it takes to install it. And so we already have the, the authority to approve alternative systems. There is new technology that is developing that allows you to be as effective with slightly smaller. It's called hydromass. It's called hydrostatic, I believe, uh, types of facilities. So, um, uh, I think on this one, the staff recommended action is just continued awareness and flexibility of what these alternative systems are. There's actually a theme or a thread between all these issues is that technology is changing, uh, as we all know. Um, and so there's going to be continued improvements on dealing with some of these issues. So staff has to be cognizant of that. And then, uh, certainly I think there's probably an opportunity to improve some of our, uh, handouts and educational materials that we, uh, give out to people to help them kind of, uh, figure out what the right design solutions are for them. But yeah, I mean, if you want to get into the weeds or details of this one, I'd invite Brian or Julie up. But, um, frankly, on this one, it's really just a report out to you all about it. We can certainly collect feedback from planning commission and council, but, um, we're obligated to abide by these regulations. And there's a cost to the public if we do not in terms of impacts to the, the public wastewater system.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Cookton?
Uh, ma'am chair, I'm in favor of the stack, staff recommendation here. And I hope I can be the first to get a educational grease interception handout.
Did you write that down? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you all. Just want to touch on outreach and engagement quick because this is one of those types of projects where we, where we get feedback and it's good to get feedback, uh, and learn people's experiences. So we do have our traditional methods of, uh, let's talk Bloomington and we do have a survey. So if you are a business owner, happen to be watching planning commission and I, please take the survey. We have had a couple of responses, um, late, we didn't include them with their packet, but, um, that'll maybe, uh, get to one aspect of the next step. I'll touch on in the next slide. We have had direct communications with various business owners who are kind of engaged on some of these issues. As Dakota mentioned, he's met with several architects about the extra materials component and gotten direct feedback there. We did present at a Minneapolis Regional Chamber, uh, Bloomington Connections, uh, event where we, uh, specifically referenced this, uh, project. And then similarly, the planning manager, uh, raised this project at the annual port authority brokers breakfast with the commercial, uh, real estate brokers. So I feel like we've gotten good word out on this one. In terms of next steps, so we have the study session with the city council plan for January the sixth at their first meeting in 2025. If they give us the green light to go ahead with, uh, some of these changes and there's good consensus built, then we would draft those in January and February and plan to schedule public hearings in March and April of this year. The last bullet is just a note that the port authority is contemplating, uh, kind of more, uh, formalizing some of this, uh, business, uh, feedback, uh, loop, if you will. And, uh, uh, they want to just keep, continue to build the stronger connective tissue with the local business community to be getting their feedback about our regulations. And so theoretically, I mean, this is almost kind of the first, uh, version of this, but, um, they could, uh, potentially adopt something equivalent or similar to the miscellaneous issues ordinance, led by the port authority, because they're the ones connected with the business, uh, community or serving the business community. But, um, uh, obviously many of these things are in zoning. And so there would be some interaction or connection there with the planning commission. So just wanted to get that on your radar. With that, I'll take any last questions, but, uh, thank you for your diligent, uh, thorough feedback.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right. We can move on to our next item, which is item two. It is also a study item. It is the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan and Planning Supervisor Johnson, you have the staff.
Okay, thank you all. So yeah, it's that time of year again, uh, work plan time. So, uh, just a reminder, um, and maybe, uh, maybe Commissioner White and, uh, previous boards and commissions has experienced this too. But all of the boards and commissions are required to deliver a work plan and an annual report, uh, to the city council for their acceptance and approval. So this activity or this, uh, uh, agenda packet item is, uh, in fulfillment of that requirement. And so there's other elements that I won't present to you tonight, but I do have some extra slides on them. You know, it talks about kind of all the applications we receive and just doing kind of a full, um, uh, synopsis of everything related to planning commission, planning division activities throughout the year. I will share this more, uh, thoroughly with the city council. You are all more aware of this because you acted and reviewed all these items. And this is not all of them in the attached exhibit. Um, this is more just the more substantial ones. But, uh, you did a number of plans, rezonings, reguidings and special projects. Uh, a lot of code amendments, uh, this year were reviewed in some form, many of which adopted. And, uh, development side was a little bit slower than maybe some years past, but still some significant projects, uh, were reviewed and approved, uh, this year. And there's been, uh, multiple permits issued on several of those, uh, projects. So, um, uh, yeah. In terms of just the, just at a high level, uh, highlights, I guess I would say, um, uh, there's 30 total projects in the draft work plan, accounting for what we estimate to be 3,460 hours of staff time, uh, of planning division staff time to execute that. We certainly pull a lot of professionals in, uh, to these projects because many of them cross many different disciplines or departments. So those hours are just planning division staff time only. 21 of these projects would be led, led by the planning division staff. We also support other, uh, departments projects, of course. 13 of these projects are carryover projects, which are either very close to conclusion, like nearing the end of their process or kind of somewhere in the middle. But that's typical to see some proportion of our projects carry over from one year to the next. We also do a kind of look ahead, um, and that's always an interesting thing for the planning commission to provide feedback if there are ideas for things that are, uh, percolating that if you're the, if there's for those futurists on the board, um, things that we need to get ahead of, it's always good to get feedback on that as well. Planning division staffing just structurally remains consistent for 2025, but I would be remiss not to bring up the fact that Glenn Markergard is retiring at, uh, the beginning of February. And so, um, uh, again, structurally, the, the division remains the same, but the loss of his, uh, wisdom, guidance, institutional knowledge and just operational, uh, support. It's just good to put that kind of caveat or asterisk on the situation that some of the impact of that is kind of unforeseen or, uh, unanticipated. We did this with the city council last year, um, that we kind of broke out some of our projects in different categories as a means to kind of show how we're, uh, trying to be more comprehensive or, uh, touching on many different areas with our work plan, um, not just kind of deploying all of our resources in one bucket or another. And so I'm going to try and use that similar approach with you all tonight. In terms of housing related projects or projects that intersect with housing. So we have the RS1 zoning district study, uh, that's close to concluding, the co-living, uh, missing metal housing, uh, new projects, fence ordinance review, corner lot standard study, official height limits map review, uh, the South Loop District Plan update is a carryover that does intersect with housing in some ways. The office conversion study is a carryover. New project, a homeowners association study, and then, uh, a carryover of the equity review, uh, which is in progress. On the business economy side, uh, small business codes and processes, we just talked about that tonight. Parking requirements review, I know that was noted as something that does need to be evaluated and with the changing nature of, uh, office and other uses and, uh, workplace behaviors, travel behaviors, certainly something we need to look at. Commercial vehicle parking in residential districts, this is something we've seen an uptick in enforcement and, uh, uh, kind of questions about, um, in the last couple of years. Sign code one look back, one year look back, as you know, we adopted a new sign code in, um, uh, February of this year. And we committed to the council to do quick, a quick, uh, uh, evaluation in terms of what we learned about our new sign code. And so there'll probably be some discreet, kind of similar to miscellaneous issues, but some discrete or minor amendments associated with that. Uh, incentivizing art code amendments. Again, the South Loop District Plan update, the office conversion study mentioned before, airport parking facility study. So for those that don't know, currently there's a moratorium in place for airport, remote airport parking facilities. Uh, and that's something that we're studying. And so this is just the, taking the formal step of adding it to the work plan. Uh, South Loop reguidings and rezonings if necessary, that's, uh, if the South Loop update, uh, recommends that some sites be reguided or rezoned as a result of that process. Uh, the port authority initiatives and, uh, commercial nodes toolkit, those are also carryovers. Transportation, the American Boulevard Transit Way, uh, Adele Hall and Kirk Roberts are here tonight to talk to you about that. So, um, that's another good segue. The Normandale and 84th Street pedestrian bridge project, that's something new and relates actually to the Normandale Lakes, um, uh, district plan. Transportation project support is always, uh, um, another new project would be an implementation progress review of all of our district corridor and small area plans. This exercise with the South Loop Plan, um, has been illuminating in terms of tracking the progress of the implementation elements of these various plans. That it's good to just revisit that on a, a semi regular basis to see where we're at. The livability of local streets project that is on the radar, uh, to complete that this year. On the environment side, uh, so kind of a, uh, outgrowth of the environmental standards review, but, uh, participating in kind of a collaboration with, um, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, sustainability, uh, natural resource staff, uh, just doing some native habitat and wildlife educational initiatives. And that just, um, is kind of building on some existing efforts, uh, that, um, the Parks and Rec Department have the naturalist program. And there's a few other things going on that we think that we can make some of these resources more available, uh, to more, uh, areas of Bloomington. The urban forest master plan, so just recently the city, uh, council, uh, signed the contract on that. It's a really exciting project in my view, um, uh, inventorying all the boulevard trees in the city of Bloomington, as well as doing a full canopy analysis of the whole city. And so that will necessitate some planning division staff support on looking at our policies around trees. And, uh, the climate action plan support, so the sustainability staff, uh, likely will, uh, be beginning the process to do their climate action plan this year. Given the connections to land use, transportation and the other elements of that, planning staff, uh, does need to support that project as well. So on the continuous improvement, uh, category or bucket, so preparation for the 2050 comprehensive plan, that's, uh, um, I can't believe we're there yet. But, uh, the Met Council will be releasing their system statements here in March, I believe, uh, maybe late February. Or I should say they're, uh, adopting their regional plans, not system statements. But, uh, so what we basically want to get done this year is creating a project schedule and, uh, uh, thinking through, uh, a strategic community engagement plan. So obviously the comp plan is going to necessitate a, a large volume of community engagement. And, um, uh, just thinking through the schedule of getting that adopted by 2028, we want to have a really, uh, solid firm plan in place. And so that's what that, uh, project is, uh, to do to dedicate those, uh, or reserve that capacity for that. The fee study, that's in progress. We've been doing some work on that just recently. And, uh, you're familiar with miscellaneous issues and I've already mentioned, uh, implementation progress review. So this is our attempt to try and, uh, build a schedule, uh, for the year. Curveball, uh, curveballs always get thrown our way and things don't always go according to plan, but this is our best guess. And it's also a way to try and manage your capacity too. You can't have all, you can't have 10 public hearings in a night, um, as Commissioner Cookton has commented on a few times. So that's, this is our attempt to try and, uh, balance and kind of, uh, sequence these things in a way that is in any way manageable. So similar key questions as to prior years, um, removal or delay, should any of these projects be, uh, removed from 2025 or the 26 list or, uh, delayed? In your view, um, do any projects need to be added that we're not currently considering? And if so, what we would recommend you do is, you know, think about recommendations about, um, removal of a kind of equivalent, uh, hours project or size project or reprioritization, is there anything that's designated as second or kind of later year priority, uh, that in your view is, uh, necessitates, uh, more urgency right now, basically? So with that, I'm happy to take your questions. We do recommend approval of the draft, uh, work plan. There we go. So I have a suggested motion for you, but I'll take your questions.
Questions or comments? I have one question and it's regarding the one year look back at this sign code amendment. Given that there was a low level of development in the last year, personally, do you believe that there is enough to go off a one year look back? Or would it be helpful for us to maybe consider a two year look back?
Thank you, Chair Albright, that's a good question. While the, uh, amount of development has been slightly reduced, um, that's true. Uh, according to our, uh, tally sheet, um, I think we processed almost 70 and that was of, you know, December 11th. We processed almost, almost 70 sign permits. And thankfully, um, uh, we haven't had a lot of issues, uh, with the new sign code. It's in our, in our judgment, performing well. But that being said, we already have a list of, I would say, uh, 10 to 15, uh, tweaks and adjustments, um, uh, that we would recommend. Just based on the experience that we've had so far in terms of just having our eyes in real world, real site situations with the sign code as opposed to the theoretical. So I would recommend that it go forward. In addition to that, I think, uh, you know, for, um, not many, but for the few parties that registered concerns about the new sign code through the public hearing process, for whatever reason. I think it was a commitment that we made to them and the city council to, to provide this process. So from that standpoint too, I would, um, uh, for your consideration, still say that I think it, it should go forward now.
That makes sense, thank you. Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks ma'am chair. Mr. Johnson, when we lowered the speed limits, I thought we had a conversation about we were going to collect some data and check back in on that. Am I remembering that correctly? And is that something we might see in 2025?
Uh, Chair Commissioner Cookton, I don't recall that very well. Luckily Kirk Roberts is here or Julie. I don't know if one of them has a recollection about that, but I welcome their help.
Chairman Albright, Commissioner Cookton, we will be doing follow-up work on the speed limits, especially looking at some specific areas of the city. And then to the extent that we can determine a difference citywide, we'll do that as well, um, sometime in the next year. One other thing that you might be thinking of is a state was asking us how we determined our speed limits and the information behind that. They have approached us on that, we sent the information over to them, um, on how we established our speed limit. So two things there, but I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, ma'am chair, I remember when we were discussing whether to do that or not, we were asking questions like, well, what have other cities experienced or how much success have they had? What does their crash data look like? And remember their answers we got, well, no one's really collected any data. And it wouldn't it be awesome if we were the people to lead the way on that and collecting that data and able to help other cities, um, make those type of decisions? So, thanks. I do have another.
Go, go for it.
I wasn't sure if I should bring this up in the miscellaneous issues thing we do at the end or in the last item, because it came up, but it kind of came up again in this one. So I think I'll talk about it. So I saw on our work plan for 25, we have something called incentivizing art. And in the first item this evening, we talked about, um, it was briefly mentioned something about incentivizing green design. That's not exactly what it was, but that's kind of where I was going with this is so we already incentivize affordable housing. It's been not perfect, but wildly successful, I think. We are talking about incentivizing art. Have we ever considered something about incentivizing green design? So if you do a mass timber building instead of a concrete building, is there something we could do for you in return to begin to incentivize design? So maybe that's something that we could do in the South Loop District Plan or something like that. Because, uh, there was talk of doing some, uh, mass timber in South Loop and we didn't get it. And maybe if we had incentivized them more, we would have gotten that mass timber building instead of structural steel building. So that's something I might be interested in the future.
Yeah, thank you for that comment, uh, Chair Albright, Commissioner Cookton. So, um, one thing I can report out is that I believe it is still on the sustainability commission work plan to do, uh, sustainable building standards. And so their original investigation into that was that they could not require it under state law, um, as a requirement. But they are, uh, thinking of various ways, uh, to, um, in effect incentivize or make it a required component if there is a public subsidy, uh, component of a project. And so that's something they are going to be studying, I believe, this year, if not next at the latest. So that might be a good, uh, project to kind of, uh, kind of, um, uh, bend, uh, that broader idea, uh, in, in terms of how to do that. Now that being said, there certainly is other opportunities for us to look at, uh, what other cities are doing in that regard. Uh, I, I appreciate the feedback about connection to the South Loop Plan, um, given that sustainability is such a key feature of that. So, um, that's something I can share with, uh, Tom Ramler Olson, who's leading that project and see if, um, there are opportunities to integrate something along those lines.
Just to finish the thought, ma'am chair, maybe there's a, uh, like a, what did we have on Tuesday? We call a co-meeting or what would we call a joint meeting?
Joint meeting.
Maybe a joint meeting with the sustainability commission someday to talk about green design and what they're doing and what we could do to help.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Thanks chair. Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. I was just thinking the same thing. So we talked, you talked about, uh, speed limits. I don't know if there, was there any other, um, anything else in the plan regarding traffic safety? Or anything regarding 102nd Street outside of, uh, Ken.
safety or anything regarding 102nd Street outside of Kennedy and Olson specifically? And then last thought is, you know, I think we had that 50% safety rating or percentile in terms of safety for that road specifically. So I don't know how difficult it would be to just do a simple stack rank of, you know, the safest and least safe streets in the city and see if there's anything interesting that comes out of that that we should take a look at. But I think we should probably look at something regarding street safety.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, I mean, I certainly would defer to the city engineer and her staff about the best way to approach that. I mean, they're here, they can take your feedback and kind of map that out in terms of what it would look like from a project. But I know they do collect a lot of data throughout the year as part of their typical operations, so we'll see what they say.
Commissioner Curry, so 102nd Street, we have added that, we will put a request in in the 2025 budget to study that corridor. This is between France and Normandale in 2026 is the plan now. We continue to work on, we implemented the school zone speed limits there this fall or over the winter here, and those are in effect and operational. We will be asking to study the entire corridor in 2026. To the 50th percentile, I think that you're alluding to, that was the ranking of France Avenue at 102nd Street, where it fell in the county's crash ranking there. Basically, it was about average for a county intersection, I think is the statement that was being conveyed there. We do rank intersections, we do have crash ratings, that's a spreadsheet that we track every year. And I'm happy to provide those, the top 10 list to you if you'd like that information. We'd probably just do that through an update through the planning manager.
Mr. Roberts, I have a question. And actually, it has to do with this, the speed limit. So my, my daughter's in daycare at Richfield, and I noticed they decreased their speed limits as well, and they have a ton of signs everywhere. Is that part of the plan for Bloomington?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, what, if you can give me a little detail on what signs? We have about 16,000 signs in the city, and we were always willing to add more. And actually, as part of our speed limit change, we added about 400 new signs. And so what sign are you thinking of?
They're yard signs, actually, a ton of them, all over the place.
That's a good question. So one of the things that, that we got from the council when we changed the speed limits was money to have our communications department do an outreach and engagement work. And so similar to Minneapolis with their 20 is plenty yard signs that you could get from the city, they are launching that effort, there's a contract in place and they're launching that now. Now, I don't know what they're going to come up with specifically, if that's one of the things that they'll use in there, but that work is going forward.
Well, it's something that, I know it's sort of off topic, but I noticed it and notice it all the time, and they're in various languages and with a lot of different cheeky sayings, so I, something I noticed. And I was like, oh, we should do that.
Yeah, I'm excited to see that outreach and engagement work, engineering, we're focused on that, and we don't always communicate to the public as well as we would like. And so I'm excited to have our communications group engage the community that way.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Cookton.
I'm just hoping we can come up with some cheeky sayings for other planning related matters of the city.
I agree.
A new project on the work plan? No, I'm just kidding.
Definitely. All right. If you want to throw that motion back up, thank you. Anyone willing to make a motion? Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. I move to recommend approval of the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, and that item moves on to final approval at the city council meeting on January 6th of 2025.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback.
All right, on to next item. Item three is also a study item. It is the American Boulevard Transit Study, and Traffic and Transportation Engineer Mr. Roberts has the report.
I'm back. All right. Chair Albrecht, commissioners, we are kicking off the American Boulevard Transit Study, and we were at council on Monday to get some feedback from them, and here we are tonight to talk to you about it. The study that we're doing extends from East Bush Lake Road on the west side of the city all the way over to 34th Avenue on the east side near the National Wildlife Refuge. You're all probably familiar with American Boulevard if you've lived in Bloomington for any time. It's a parallel route to the 494. It was, it was designed and built as sort of a reliever to the 494, which has been congested for many, many years. With the construction you see there now, the city has pushed for those improvements for a good, quite a while. They're finally happening, so that's improvements to capacity, to safety, to the interchange at 35W and the entire 494 corridor. Hopefully, that will relieve some of the congestion from American Boulevard. And so it gives us a chance now, with that in mind, to kind of take a look at this road. If it doesn't have to serve this role for Minda, what does this road need to look like for the city? And that's one of the questions for this study. Generally, in the past, volumes on American Boulevard have been, they range from about 3,000 cars a day up to about 17,000 cars a day, so it is a significantly busy corridor. With its proximity to the 494, what's known as the 494 Strip, there's a lot of excellent employment, jobs and things like that along the corridor. One of the things Bloomington's been really fortunate in, in the past 10 years is that we've seen a lot of transit investment in the city. Go back one slide here. So with the opening in the orange line, the, that's the orange line, obviously, on the map here, the green line, the southerly route of the green line runs through Bloomington on American Boulevard that opened up recently as well. We've got the red line down across the river, and of course, the blue line LRT. In Bloomington's long-term plans, American Boulevard has always been slated for a BRT route. And it makes a lot of sense there, it intersects a whole lot of the other transit routes. And then in the latest Met Council plan, they've agreed with us, but in the latest plan, they, they didn't put it in there for immediate development. It's still in their long-term plans, but it's sort of been put in, in kind of a longer term status. And we, we are still interested in seeing this go forward. And so with that, it's still part of their plans, but it's something that we're going to have to do some development work for, and that's important to us. If you look at this heat map on transit use in the city right now, American Boulevard is, is clearly a spot that gets a lot of transit use. It runs through three of our special development districts, it's bookended on the west side by the Normandale Lake District, and we see a lot of transit use emerging in that district now with the changes that have been made, the residential components in addition to office, right through the heart of Penn American, where you have the orange line. And then, of course, as you get over into the South Loop, that's our last special use district where we just see a lot of transit use traditionally. I'm excited about this study. If, for Bloomington, if it's going to remain a city that's fair, safe and affordable transit, it's going to have to be a part of that. And so I'm excited about this work. The study, the primary goals of the study is, again, as I mentioned, to put, keep American Boulevard in the long-term transit plan. And to do that, we've got to start developing that, and that's the second goal, is we need to develop the arterial BRT line, figure out what it would look like, what it would cost, how do we start programming that? It's not enough, though, anymore to just say, you know, Metro Transit, come build us a BRT line. The city needs to meet them with our investments and how we invest in the roadway. And so that's the next goal of the study, is what can we do as a city to make this corridor attractive for that continuing transit investment that we want to see from Met Council? And that could be things like looking at the density in terms of the land use, last mile connections for bikes, pedestrians, can we make it a little more inviting for those last mile trips, for those last half-mile trips? What do we need to start doing long-term to make that a good corridor? And then, as I stated earlier, we need to plan for the future of American Boulevard. What does this road look like for the city of Bloomington? Now that it doesn't have to be a parallel route to this busy interstate, what should the road look like for the community? And so that's the last goal. Another thing I'm excited about is the people we have working on it. The study is led by Adele Hall, she's a very experienced transit planner, she comes to us from SRF Consulting, and she's going to walk through the rest of the presentation.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Adele Hall, and I am, as Kirk said, I'm the consultant team project manager for the American Boulevard Transit Study, and I do come to you from SRF. It's my charge tonight to provide an overview of the scope and schedule for the study. We are starting, we started last month, and the study will run just shy of a year. We start with evaluating existing conditions, and that includes the land use and development characteristics in the corridor as well as the transportation patterns on American Boulevard for people who are riding the bus, people who are walking, biking, and to a light extent, driving. We're doing, you know, a technical analysis, looking at your existing data, and then we will couple that with what we learn in a first phase of public engagement coming up next month. So we intend to go out to the public using the Let's Talk Bloomington setup for an online survey. We'll take that same survey out on the Route 542 and talk to some bus riders. We'll also host an open house, date and time, location still TBD, that will be in roughly mid-January. And then we are also planning some specific stakeholder meetings with stakeholders identified by City of Bloomington Community Engagement Staff. So really, the existing conditions kind of puts together real-life lived experience that we hear about from people as well as kind of what we're seeing in the data. And we're really trying to learn about what's out there, but we're also coming to you, and we went to the city council on Monday, to try to understand what the vision is for this corridor. So it's not just about what it is today, it's also about what it can be in the future. And creating that vision is really important because it really forms the basis for us to create some concepts for what American Boulevard could look like. And this is a generic example here down below. You can see that a concept might include, you know, what to do about buses, what to do about bikes, what to do about pedestrians, what to do about landscaping. It might show, like suggest development patterns along a corridor. And, and we'll develop these concepts in response to that vision, and we'll also evaluate them according to that vision as well. So once we have developed some concepts for the corridor that include BRT, that include revised pedestrian conditions or, or whatever else we kind of hear expressed in the vision, we will then evaluate it. And these, these evaluation criteria listed on the bottom there are some typical ones we often use in studies like this. We look at transit ridership, like if we were to go forward with these concepts, what would transit ridership look like? What would be the cost of developing this, this new concept? How much would it cost to operate transit on that, on that route? What would it be like for pedestrians and cyclists? What kind of land use changes could we expect? And how could we expect greenhouse gases and VMT to change? And so we'll look at all of that. And then we have one second phase of public engagement planned next summer in August. We'll, we'll go back out to the public and talk about, with them about what we've learned. So then the study culminates in a next steps and final report. The next steps will really focus on what did we learn and how does that translate into what the city can do to realize that vision on American Boulevard? And that concludes my portion of the scope and schedule, and now we get to the part of the presentation where I'm seeking your feedback. And that is on this vision statement. This is a very generic example of, purposely generic example of a vision statement. And I'll just give you a moment to kind of read it, take it in. So you can see it's, it mentions development patterns, it mentions, you know, various modes of transport on the corridor, but it's generic in that it doesn't assign much priority or really emphasize anything in particular. But you can kind of get a sense of sort of the words that we might use in a statement like this. And so what we're looking to do is to, is to really take this statement and really make it much more meaningful for this corridor. And so our questions for you all tonight are, what is your ideal outcome for this study? What should the team focus on during the study? And what is your priority for American Boulevard corridor? And I'll stand for questions and just to listen to any feedback that you might have.
Comments? Thoughts? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Before I get to the specific questions here, I just have a couple of general thoughts, if that's okay.
Sure.
I'd like to say I'm super glad we're doing this. I think you probably remember, like I do, Madam Chair, when Metro Transit came before us and said, we're taking you off the list. And I just remember, it was ridiculous when you looked at all the data as to how they made their decision. We checked like eight of the nine boxes, but there was one box that we couldn't check because of whatever reason it was, and they took us off the list, and it was, it was ridiculous, particularly in, you look at all the other things Bloomington does right for Met Council with our affordable housing and other things, and it just felt like this isn't a partnership at all. Like, we're doing awesome things for Met Council, and they're not rewarding us in any way when you look at the blue line and where we were, especially a couple of years ago with the blue line, and then they took us off the BRT. It was like, this isn't a fair relationship at all. So I'm glad we're doing this to convince the Met Council and Metro Transit that we are the right choice for expanded bus rapid transit, especially when you look at 494. I mean, what can we do to take traffic off of 494? You put reliable public transit parallel to it, and it's just so obvious. And so, super glad we're doing this. One of the things, I guess to kick off one of these questions here somewhere, I'm sure, is one of the things I would like an outcome of the study to be is that we start getting buildings closer to American Boulevard. Again, the last few developments we've seen on American Boulevard, the buildings are so far away. We just saw Bloomington Kia, where that building was super far away. The Toyota dealership before that is pretty far away. Do you remember that Olive Garden when that came before us? Olive Garden is acres away from American Boulevard. And so if we want to talk about last mile transit and stuff, it's about bringing those buildings closer to the street to make it more pedestrian friendly. It's like, gotta be one of the least pedestrian friendly streets in the entire city outside of Old Chocopee Road. This is like, right there is really tough for, for pedestrians. Recognizing that there's a ton of traffic on it, and I haven't studied it, obviously, from a traffic standpoint, I think it would be hard to get rid of a lane of traffic there just because of how much demand there is. So recognizing there's going to be difficulties, but it's not particularly pedestrian friendly. And so if we want to have better transit, better last mile, half mile trips, et cetera, I think it's about making it better on a human scale for, for people instead of just cars.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. The, the thing that came to me when, when we were first talking about this was the potential for art in this corridor. I could really see this being a place in which people come to, to experience Bloomington in a different way. Like, I, I think about, you know, there, there are places like, where were we, in San Diego when we were at the, the conference, and they have that, that whole art district, and they have a ton of public art along that, do you remember what that was called?
Some of us had COVID in San Diego.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Forgot about that, apologies. But they have this whole art district, and it's very transportation adjacent. It's, you know, it's some similar, similar feel to the mural that is off 77 and what would, that's Old Cedar in 77, that feel. I think there's a lot of potential and a lot of business partnerships who would be really interested in having this be some sort of, I don't want to say theme, because that sounds a little cheeky, but, but I definitely see the potential for almost like an art district or some sort of showcase of Bloomington in this way. Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about that. I mean, just looking at American Boulevard, I think, you know, obviously, there's different, I don't know if theme, themes aren't the right word, but there's different sections to it with different kind of personalities, if you will. So I think it probably, I mean, I don't know how you tie them all together, there's maybe certain areas where you can do that, and then there's other areas that could be more pedestrian friendly. I also agree that, I mean, I don't know how you make American Boulevard pedestrian friendly except over the course of except over the course of 20-plus years of redevelopment. I do think it is an area, if you can actually find, you know, three to four feet, you know, left to right, where you could potentially put in a single bike lane that does go across the entire city. So I think that's probably the only road where we have that opportunity. So that's, that's all I got.
Commissioner White.
So I always think of Old Chocopee as kind of our back porch, and American Boulevard's kind of our front porch. When people come to Bloomington, it's usually through American Boulevard, and it's the shortcut to everywhere, and it's, I don't want to get on 494, so I'm going to hop on to American. And, and I think that the key to transit is always making it easy to use and connect to things in a very convenient way. And I think the more we can show a need and an opportunity for that in this study, to make the case for that investment, the better. And so I hope that is an outcome of the study. I think that, you know, in terms of a vision for American Boulevard, I don't think you ever, I don't think it's ever going to be a, a charming pedestrian thoroughfare, as, as lovely as that sounds. I think perhaps there's other opportunities for that in the city that we should be exploring. But I do think that it can be a safer place for people who are on foot, and I think the idea of having a safer bike path across the city is an important one, whether that's American Boulevard, I don't know. I think that'd be a great thing to study, whether that's an opportunity that we have because it's absolutely a need that we have in the city, is a very intriguing idea. But I think that, you know, there's just no, no arguing the fact that for, for Bloomington, American Boulevard is a very main thoroughfare, that one of the few roads that connects east to west. And anything we can do to make that more efficient, less painful, and more friendly to as many different modes of transportation as possible, and as attractive to getting people out of their cars as possible, the better. So whatever your study can do to show that and encourage that would have my full support.
The only other comment that I have is there are a lot of cultural communities along the corridor as well. And so I think that should be brought out in addition to what I said about the art. I am a little bit on the other side of the fence on multiple modes of transportation, unless it's a dedicated, protected bike lane. I think having it be in the same surface as a bus rapid transit and other cars, I think we'd be, we don't have a, we don't have a stable and good culture of, I would say, bikeability in our city, so starting there would be really difficult. It would be difficult to prove it out from there. I'm thinking of, you know, it's a difference between in Minneapolis, you know, biking on Bryant is a much different experience than you would bike on Lyndale. And so you don't bike on Lyndale because you bike on Bryant. And that has a protected bike lane, and it has speed humps, and it has, you know, there's, there is focus to that. And so I would lean towards if we're going to do a bus rapid transit, and if it's not as pedestrian-friendly, which I don't think, I think you're right, it's going to take a long time, I would lean towards not having a bike lane unless it was fully protected. Commissioner White.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I agree. I think it's unlikely you will find that it is a doable option for American Boulevard, but I do think that if the study can show that and yet reinforce the need for it, I'd encourage you to talk to the Sustainability Commission, because I know they did some work a couple of years ago about looking at routes, potential routes along the, around the city, and did some feasibility work around bike routes. So I would encourage you to talk to them if you haven't already.
Any other comments? Did you get everything you were looking for?
Yes, thank you. This was really great. I think Kirk and I will be, you know, kind of re-listening to this conversation, re-listening to our council conversation, and kind of synthesizing all that with also what we hear from the public as well, and trying to work that into that vision statement and goals for the corridor. Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item four of our agenda, which is also a study item. It is consideration of approval of the draft November 7th and November 21st meeting of the Planning Commission, the meeting synopsis. And I don't have who was there and who wasn't. I was at both of them. But do we have quorum to act on either of these or both of these? So there'd be three, so that's that one for sure. All right, we'll start with the November 7th. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting synopsis for November 7th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the November 7th meeting synopsis of the Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That one passes. All right, 11:21, I believe. Yes, go for it.
We're good. Okay.
We're good?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to, move to approve the draft meeting synopsis for November 21st, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. All right, moving on, we are at item five. It is also a study item, is the Planning Commission Policy and Issues Update and Planning Manager Mark Agard. You have the floor.
Chair Albrecht, commissioners, good evening. Looking forward to your next meeting would normally be January 16th. However, we have no items on that agenda, and we didn't continue any tonight, so that meeting would be canceled. And then the next meeting would be January 30th. That agenda has not fully closed yet. That would close next Tuesday. But we do have two study items so far on the agenda. Well, actually, a public hearing and a study item. Public hearing is the RS1 and R1A zoning district amendments. And then the second item, a study item, would be the one-year look-back sign code amendments. Talk about that as a study session, and then that would potentially become a public hearing later. That's what we have coming up. I do want to mention, and I sent this out via email earlier, but I know some stat or planning commissioners are having access problems to their city email right now. So just want to mention the National Planning Conference this year will be in Denver, and that's March 29th to April 1st. So think about if you're able to and interested in attending, and then just let me know as soon as you can, whether you're a yes, no, or maybe, and we'll get a request in to allow you to register for that conference.
Any other items we wish to discuss? Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. I believe Chair Albrecht had brought up in the past, looking at our attendance and considering maternity or paternity, and I don't know, has there been any movement on that, or do we just?
Great question.
Yes. Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Curry, that provision is a city code provision, so it applies to all commissions, advisory commissions uniformly. Would require a council direction to amend it. So I know that that issue's been brought up internally with, we have a person that coordinates, to a certain extent, all the different advisory commissions. And so I know there's been some discussion on it. I'm not aware of any code amendments in the works at this time, though.
Okay.
Right. Any other items for discussion? All right, seeing none, we will close the Thursday, December 19th, 2024, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Thanks, everyone.